For June 16th, 2021. Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Chair Milliken.
Here.
Vice Chair Davis. Treasurer DeVardie.
DeVardie here.
Secretary Hatcher.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Lindau.
Here.
Trustee McKnight Warren.
Here.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So, move.
We have a motion, support. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the approval of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Agenda stands approved. Thank you. Tab A in our packet tonight, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of the May 25th monthly meeting. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
Some support.
We have a motion and support. Is there any discussion, any corrections? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Minutes are approved. Thank you. Citizen participation. First WCC Education Association. Ms. Kissel.
Good evening.
Welcome.
It is June 2021. The months just seem to be flying by and the decisions we make are just, are multiplying. We talk or read about returning to normal, but those headlines are littered with reminders of the anxiety, the stress, really the scars of the pandemic. For me, returning to normal is not a reality. We are forever changed. Our institutions are forever changed as a result of the pandemic and all that has occurred throughout this time. While these changes can be overwhelming, it also affords us the opportunity to grow. In conversations with the administration, we are all considering the short and long-term implications and issues for returning to campus. As we work to fulfill the mission of WCC, our need to innovate and seek the best possible ways to conduct our work is essential. This does not mean we can throw open the doors on the campus. Instead, we must work to balance our desire to return to normal with the steps to ensure the safety and well-being of our staff, students, and community. The WCC EA has appreciated the open conversations with the administration around these changes. As we also look to the 2022 negotiations, we recognize the need for our contract to reflect the changes that will long endure. There are no current grievances to report this month, but we have been working on additional letters of agreement impacting our campus footprint in the fall. Also, as I noted last month, we have been discussing the final packages for our full-time members in the Culinary Department, and we have reached a settlement and are in the process of making the final changes to those. While our full-time and part-time colleagues in the Culinary Department are not leaving by choice, we are now beginning to see many others looking to retire or chart a new path beyond WCC. As this list is ever-growing, I'll wait until July to address it more fully. So this past weekend, I had the opportunity to take my daughter on a tour of Washington, Washington DC to make up for her eighth grade trip that she missed in 2020. Having left the confines of my home and community so infrequently over the last year, being in DC certainly felt surreal at times. In many locations, we were alone, without the crush of the crowds or the need to rush from site to site. These feelings of surrealness are similar to how I felt when I'm on campus. I wonder about the long-term changes, how our decisions now will shape our future. But thankfully, none of this needs to be done alone. In fact, it is imperative that we hear and welcome the many voices and ideas as we move forward. While the idea to return to normal may seem exciting, there is greater value considering how to create a new normal, based on what has worked in the past, but is flexible enough to embrace what will work in the future. The WCCA membership is committed to the future that emphasizes collaboration with the many college stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments this evening? Hearing none. Vanessa, were there any written communications this evening?
No.
Or this week, or this month?
There was none received.
Thank you. We'll turn to special reports. Mandatory audit communication.
Good evening, Board. I'd like to introduce Gary Robb. Gary Robb is our manager with Andrew Hooper's Pavlik, our new auditing firm. We're kicking off our year-end process as we speak, and Gary's going to talk to the Board about our audit process for this, for this year. So I'll turn over the hands of Gary. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, for that introduction. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me here. It's great to be out of the house and see you all for the first time, and thank you all for choosing our proposal. We really are excited to work with you all, and we've already started working with Bill and his team, and things have been going really, really well. To that end, though, our responsibility is actually to you all, the Board, and that's where our responsibility lies. So with that, this, this evening, I've come to just walk through some of the required information we're supposed to share with you, ideally before we get started with the audits. So in your packets, you should have two letters, and they both are rather lengthy, but the one I'm supposed to go with you tonight is the one titled, has bolded responsibilities at the top. And so the second letter is actually our engagement letter, and the only thing I'll just call out with that is that that includes our fees, which will be the same as what was included in our proposal. So unless there's any questions on that, otherwise I'll just walk through the scope letter with you all.
Please do.
So to that end, on the scope letter, I, I would normally go pretty light, but I think, you know, being this is our first time, I'll just kind of walk through and just kind of talk through our responsibilities and that of management and the Boards. The first section, the responsibility section, the best way I describe this, and you've probably walked through this before, is just to start with ultimately where we end at. And so with that, management is responsible for the colleges' financial statements, excuse me. We're responsible for providing an opinion on those. In addition to that, underneath government auditing standards, we will also issue a couple other reports. So there will be a report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance. That report is, we do not provide an opinion, so that is report underneath government auditing standards. We'll read to say if we found something, we would report that to you all, so it's a required communication. The third letter that we would also issue would be a management letter if there's anything else that comes to our attention. So throughout this whole process, we're very keen on no surprises, is what we're only getting with that. The second section of the reporting that we'll also be responsible for will be the single audit underneath the Uniform Grant Guidance, and so that will be the test of compliance requirements with those major programs that are found underneath the single audit requirements. So this year, most likely going to be the, well, the HERF 1, 2, 3, American Rescue Plan, all that money is where we're probably going to be spending our time. So with that, there'll be a report on the compliance for those aspects. We will also look at internal controls there, and if there is anything that's found, we would report that back to you all. Finally, as far as responsibilities and reporting, so there is some supplementary information that does come with those financial statements, and we will look at that as well. Primarily, that is that schedule of federal awards that we look at, just to make sure that that's correct, because that is how we base our single audit and when we look at compliance for those major programs selected. The next section, the plan, scope, and timing. So with that, this basically just walks through and talks about what is materiality and what does that look like underneath government auditing standards. In summary, I'll just tell you that it is a, something that we have to take and look at for user groups as a whole. It does include quantitative and qualitative measurements. So for example, if we're looking at compliance, there may not be a financial or a fiscal impact to something. That does not mean that we would not report that, though. So there could be something where it is not necessarily a control finding or has a financial impact, but it is something that we would communicate and include in the single audit and communicate to you all as well. The next section, the summary of significant accounting and auditing issues. So it does mention internal controls there again, so we do again consider internal controls, but do not report or provide an opinion on that. We will work with management and let them know if there is something we find. And then the COVID-19 section, so something new, of course, this year that we've been working with a lot, like I mentioned, working with Ben and Bill quite a bit. So with the COVID-19 pandemic and the effects that that's had, chances are there will be some additional disclosures included in the financial statements related to that, if nothing else is related to that additional funding. However, there are some uncertainties that comes with that, as you all know, so there may be something about subsequent events or uncertainties or contingencies or commitments in the future related to that. And then on the last page, I'll just call out a few things. We do provide other services to the college, so we do provide an audit of the foundation in addition to what we provide for the college, and we also assist with some tax work, so the 990 and 990Ts as well. Related to independence, so if there were any significant non-attractive services that we are providing, we would have to evaluate it just to make sure that we still are independent with the college. For your case, that's pretty limited. We assist with a very limited amount of tax work, but otherwise, everything we do is related to the audits. And then finally, the only other section I'll call to you is there is a, a section with recently issued accounting pronouncements in there. So we do work with management on these, just to see if there is anything that will have a significant impact or affect how the statements are presented for the current year. For this year, the big question will be GASB 84 fiduciary activities. So we're hoping that will not have an impact. Essentially, you may have heard about that pronouncement, but essentially what it does is it draws into question whether certain funds should be reported as fiduciary activity for the college. So whether, initially it was questioned, I guess a good example would be whether something like a 401K or a 403B would be rolled into and have a separate statement for the, for the college. Hopefully, that's not the case. We just have the document around that and make sure we have a good position. Otherwise, most of the other stuff will be coming up in future years and isn't really anticipated to have any, any larger significant effect. That's all I have. Other than that, I just wanted to be here just to see if you all have any questions and, you know, put some faces to some names and see you all.
Are there any questions of Gary?
I had one question.
Yes, sir.
I know this is for the next fiscal year, but you have said that GASB 87 will have an impact on the college's financial statements next, next year?
Correct.
Is that, what kind of impact? That's just about leases, right?
Correct, yeah. So the, the big takeaway from that one is to take operating leases, which were normally not included on the balance sheet, and include those as a, as a right-to-use assets. So they're just trying to make it a little bit more clear if you had a lot of operating leases, short-term leases, activity in your financial statements, that activity would be reflected.
So those are, if we leased other facilities for our use?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. I guess I'll ask our finance people, I know we do some things in YPSY and some other areas of this county, in Livingston County, I'm not sure if leases are involved in that, but I'll find out. Thank you.
You're welcome. Do any other trustees have questions of Gary? Thank you, Gary.
Thank you all. Looking forward to working with you all. If you have any questions, please so hesitate to contact me.
It's nice to meet you, and we'll see more of you, it sounds like.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next special report, Diversity and Inclusion Update.
Good evening. So I am here to introduce our annual Diversity and Inclusion Report, and, you know, I just think this year is a little bit different because of COVID, and what our report will show that we really worked hard to maintain momentum with our students, to manage the different cohorts of students and what those needs were. And then the exciting part is that we have Dean Eric Reed here, who is new to the college, and he used his onboarding time to learn about what we've been working on and to actually be able to preview some of the new things that he'll be working on in the following fall. And I'll be back to pinch-hit a little bit to talk about some of the success factors. Here's Dean Reed.
Good evening, Dr. Eric Reed, Dean of Student Access, Success, Equity, and Inclusion here at WCC. Like Dr. Hearns said, I have the pleasure of sharing with you our Diversity and Inclusion Report for 2021. So today, we're going to start out by relooking at our board policy and framing it how we, how that supports every activity that we've done during this year that I'll show you later. And then later, after that, I'll go through all the different activities, well, some of the activities that we've done as it relates to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And one thing I'll say, I am very, very impressed by the staff and faculty, the amount of initiatives and activities they did during the midst of a pandemic and a virtual environment. There are many institutions and places where people kind of cease things and slowed down, but I truly, when I met with people during my onboarding, I noticed the passion and the commitment to students, to advocacy, to inclusion. So I'm just going to share with you some of those things that people did over the campus. And then lastly, I'll cover some 2020, some next year strategies that we have for diversity, equity, and inclusion. So let's talk about our board policy. We mandate that we create an environment, promote an environment where everyone feels appreciated, no matter what cultural difference, difference or similarity that you have. And then taking it a step further, we want to make sure there's access and success amongst our student body, no matter what the cultural background or identity of the students that we have. So, well, you'll see that every slide that I present, a different initiative, it ties back into this board policy, so this serves as the foundation for all of our work. So let's first talk about the Office of Diversity and Inclusion. So access, success, equity, and inclusion, you'll see each of these statements, but you'll also notice the word student is in each of these statements. We're a student-centered office. We really care about, with access, making sure that students have an equitable opportunity here. We know that community colleges were pretty much purposed to promote greater access, but we also know in our nation's history, there are barriers for certain populations, whether it's race, whether it's low income, first generation, that inhibits certain students to come to college campus. So we want to go the extra mile just to make sure every student has an equitable opportunity to come here. And then for success, once they're here, making sure that they have the tools that they need to be successful on this campus. Then equity drives success a little bit further by looking at those individual needs of the populations, but then also looking at our programs, our academic programs, and then our services, making sure we're meeting those needs. Then lastly, creating an inclusive environment. Let's talk about access. I mentioned going the extra mile just to make sure students have an equitable opportunity to come here. So STEAM Week, if you pay attention to STEM research, you'll see that we need to increase the number of minorities and women in STEM careers and STEM pathways, and what the number one proven strategy is to do early K through 12 outreach. And that's what we're doing right here. We're welcoming all the school districts around the area to come, well, virtually, they were able to come. We have 450 attendees, which is a record. Virtually, they're kind of helping that matter, but we're welcoming them here so they can learn about our, our pathways that we have here and hopefully start their journey here for STEAM. But we're also encouraging our students, our STEM scholars, I'll talk about later, to get involved with this and then host some of the workshops for the students. So this year, we had another successful year. This was in March, and it was three days with 40 sessions. Minority student outreach, another key focal point for access. We partnered with some of our local school districts, the Office of Diversity and Inclusion. We specifically target some of our local school districts that have higher minority representation. That may be Ypsilanti Community Schools or Lincoln, Lincoln High School. So we make sure that students know about our scholarships that we have, and they're applying for it. Now, we did notice that COVID, it had a number of different impacts, and that was one of the areas where it had an impact on our enrollment of African-American students. So, but there's a trend across the nation that there was about the same number of that 23% you'll see, but I didn't just stop there. We already started doing workshops virtually for those specific high schools where we have higher minority students, where students can come to those workshops virtually, they learn about the programs we have and the scholarship opportunities. And then this summer, we're partnering, partnering with Ypsilanti Community Schools for the Boots on the Ground Campaign. That is, we'll be going around the neighborhood, door-to-door knocking, encouraging students to get back motivated for school, whatever grade level they're at, but then also telling them about the opportunities here at WCC. We did notice that prior to the pandemic, our in-person outreach really was successful. We had 80 students show up to an event, and 53 of them applied for the scholarship. So we're looking forward in our future program to getting back in person. So college-level placement. College-level placement is really important because if you advance the number of students that can place into that college-level type of course with math and English, you can shorten their time to degree, which means less money and less time, and they can further get closer to their goal of graduating. So we know that math, writing, if students complete those during their first year, they're more likely to persist, so we want to encourage students to take our assessments, which we've reformed, and this is a national thing that, that colleges across the world, across the country are looking at, looking at those assessments, like standardized tests, are they fairly placing students in a right level of college coursework? So more students are getting placed into that accurate level of college math, and then there also, data is also showing that students are being successful in that college-level math as well. So success, equipping students with the tools that they need to be successful here at the college.
I'm going to jump in a little bit right here. Go back. All right. So what we really wanted to highlight here were the successes that we had in our aggregate graduation rate that we report. And so one of the things that, if you remember, that we've talked about in the past was, we really wanted to get to that 20% by 2020. And so when we look at our Fall '17 cohort, that would have been the cohort of students that we want to get to that 20%. And you'll notice here in the, in the presentation I read that we actually exceeded that and got to that 27%, which we're really proud of. And just some key factors. Dean Reed talked about placement. We've been looking at prereqs, that students are taking, upfront cohort management, faculty engagement has been amazing, and then really updating our student communication and being more strategic about advising. Some things that we'll be looking at going forward is caseload advising. When you saw the presentation from TargetX, we talked a lot about proactive outreach to students, but also really focusing on our students and the success that they need or the skills that they need and tools they need that are here part-time, and really being more responsive there. Alpha Scholars is our Title III grant, so we'll be talking about that a lot more, and there are some success factors there. But we've also learned over the last year, more compressed and accelerated programs and courses. We're looking at competency-based education and really having success teams that wrap around our students. So again, we're making some big strides in retention. This year, we were really focused on maintaining that sense of belongingness with students and keeping that momentum, as you'll see in some of the future slides that Dean Reed will talk about, and creating that sense of belongingness.
Thank you, Dr. Hearns. Let's talk about our scholarships that we have. Our office, we intentionally target, work with those target high schools that have the higher minority representation, so we can have a diverse scholarship pool. And one thing that you'll notice that scholarships oftentimes, they're good because they decrease the amount of loan burdens for students, but there, it's also retention strategy. It also, it actually helps students be successful in graduate. And Sophia's statement right here, she says it pushes her, gives her a strong stride. She's meaning completion. So it's a retention strategy for us, and we've been really focusing on, on our scholarships the last few years, making sure students are attending our success conference, which I'll talk about. They have an advisor, a coach that's working with them, they have monthly programs that's keeping them engaged and then completing their college education here at WCC before their next step. So more about our scholarships. We have been very consistent in increasing our retention for our scholarships, so students aren't just getting a scholarship, coming here, and then going on to the next endeavor. They're actually coming back. So that's great, that, great to see that we're at 80%. We're above full-time course low as far as encouraging students to take credits. We do know that it's a proven research method that the higher amount of credits that a student takes per semester, the higher their chances are of graduating and completing their degree. So it's good to see that students are actually taking advantage of that, and that's, that could be attributed to our coaching and advising that we're doing by working with our students up front. The Student Success Conference. Now, this is equipping the students with the tools, so they have a chance to meet advisors, coaches, the Writing Center, our different resources that support the student, and these staff and faculty are presenting workshops for the students to engage and participate in, so they can meet them, have a one-on-one relationship, and then get engaged to their, to their success. And this is prior to the start of the semester. So we'll notice that during the first semester, then the fall, a couple weeks before, we do have this Student Success Conference, and we noticed that students were persisting and our retention rates were going up, so we added another workshop for the winter semester to where students were able to come back and get recharged, like the name says, for the next semester. Brother to brother, this is our African-American male student support program. I'm excited to see that, you know, we're now seeing the fruits of our labor, because at least 50% of the students have either graduated or on track to graduate. And if you pay attention to the research for African-Americans, this is phenomenal here, and students are actually graduating. So I talked to Orlando, he plans to go on the slide, he plans to go to Western next year. He actually just graduated this past winter semester. He's doing phenomenal right now. So we're looking forward to continue other strategies that, that are also going to support our students of color here. Equity. Now we're looking at each of the individual students, looking at their needs and tying in our programs, our services to make sure we're matching that, make sure we're doing, making sure every student has a fair opportunity to be successful, whether it's their academic program or support services, everything on our, on our campus. So starting with, one thing that you'll see when you look at, you know, students of color and first-generation students, sometimes we struggle with the networks, the social capital to go off and get a good job or, you know, just get that internship. You might not have the uncle or the parent to call in and just, you know, snap and get you a good job, you know, right after you finish. So, you know, this is initiative that gives students of color the opportunity to work in for local tech firms, for internships prior to graduation. We talk a lot about experiential learning, and that can help students actually persist, but also make sure we're, we're creating equity for that, for the wage gaps and the pay gaps after they graduate college. So Mohammed here started at WTC, came to WC, and now is at EMU, and this is our first year in the program for this partnership and our Entrepreneurship Fund, so we're looking to continue this in the next year. Career and Technical Education. You'll often see here about CTE. This is just providing access to special populations, and some of those populations, we're talking about advancing more women in skills trades, more men in nursing. These are high-paying, high-demand jobs and careers, and there's other populations that we do also target as well, where we're looking at trying to just create, close that wage gap, you know, create more income, more medium, median-level income for these special populations. So we're going to do some more work when we're working in the community with the local high schools. I'll show you later on in our strategies, but this is a great initiative, and we actually have a grant, grant to do this work here at WCC. STEM Scholars, this is probably one of my favorite slides. I believe personally, this is a national model that we have here. This is what we call a learning community. So we do a lot of outreach with the STEAM Week, getting students to come here, but guess what? When they get here, they have this warm, welcoming community of staff and faculty that's advising them, mentoring them, that's connecting them with their colleagues at the other schools, so students have a clear pathway to going into their STEM field. You'll see since our inception of the program, the numbers have increased as far as enrollment to the point now that we're getting so many applications that some, unfortunately, we have to turn some students away from the program. But our students aren't just doing successful. Here at U of L, they have a 3.56 average. Now, we're also supporting non-traditional students like Michael with this program as well.
My name is Michael Davis, and I'm a, I was in the first STEM Scholars cohort, and I graduated from Washtenaw Community College with an associate in pre-engineering science transfer, and I was recently accepted to the University of Michigan in Ann Arbor. My journey at Washtenaw kind of started where I, first I originally came for a certificate in robotics, because I was always kind of interested in that, and I wanted a job in the manufacturing robotics field. But when I got to Washtenaw, after talking to some people like Susan and others, I found that I kind of had a, a small knack for school and education and everything, and I had good grades, so I decided to chase my degree, and so far, I'm on my track, and my goal is to become a mechanical engineer dealing specifically in robotics.
Okay. So, we'll talk about inclusion. We just want to make sure this is an environment where people feel like they have a voice, where they feel like they're welcome, and there's a sense of belonging. One of the key ways of doing that is equipping our staff and faculty with the knowledge they need to create that environment, and for professional development, we had a record number of attendees because of this virtual environment. People could just join it with our sessions. We had over 40, 40-plus sessions with 480 attendees. But for fall and winter in service, we brought Dr. Sandra McGuire. She engaged staff and faculty in a conversation on how to create an equitable playing field for each individual class, student in her class by using advising and mentoring as a strategy. So looking at those needs and using those strategies to make, make sure that everyone's learning and engaged in the process. Bart Luther King. So we had our celebration again this year. We actually had student speakers come that really made it a very, you know, you know, impactful experience. You actually hear from the students, it sets the tone a little bit differently, because it shows how they appreciate Dr. Martin Luther King and the work they do and in the spirit that we live in and do here at WCC. And we also did our Equity in Action Awards here at, here for the ceremony too as well. The Human Library was one of our awardees this year, and I'll talk about them for a minute. Human Library gives our staff and faculty the chance just to, you know, learn from other staff and faculty and students about their experiences, whether there was an experience of injustice, or racism, or sexism, or any of the other isms. Learning from your colleague can really kind of like impact you and kind of break down those biases that you might have about others. So this is a professional development tool that helps us create an environment of inclusion just by listening to the voices of others during this, this, this event that happens in March every year. First Generation College Student Day, which happens November 8th every year.[1799.63] This is important because this year of the pandemic, many students feel isolated, but definitely first-generation college students that already feel like they're on their own when they're going on this path. So we wanted to celebrate their success and let them know that we did not forget them. We're still here and we gave them the opportunity to share their statements, some quotes and everything, and we sent them a little gift just to encourage them to keep pushing along the semester. Our Michigan Community College Gender and Sexuality Conference. This is our second annual year of having it. And this is put on by Outspace, which is a student club, probably one of our most active student clubs. I talked with their advisor and they're having monthly socials virtually. They have created platforms and everything. So students, the conference wasn't as big this year, but they're going to have it again next year. But they're really active and we're excited about the work they're doing, so we're looking forward to this conference again. Equity Ed Talks. This is a newer initiative. This gives our staff and faculty the opportunity to engage in inclusion, to talk about how do we create a more inclusive environment, to talk about how do we build more equity. One of them was disparities in maternity care. We had our nursing faculty talk about some of the issues for Black maternal health. So every semester, we'll give faculty and staff the opportunity to share these videos with me and then we'll share it out with the rest of the campus. So lastly, the students in the Sustainability Task were took and pulled themselves to create a land acknowledgement. And what that is, that's pretty much giving tribute to the indigenous peoples of this land that we work, that we eat, that we breathe and sleep on. So you see many colleges are starting to put this to use, so you might see this land acknowledgement in other instances in our practices. I won't have time to play the video because of time, so you may be able to check it out later. We might be able to share it some type of way. So I'll touch upon a few strategies for next year. HBCU Partnerships. HBCU stands for Historically Black Colleges and Universities. We want to create clear pathways with these institutions that have the same mission of access. HBCUs have, for a long time, have had a mission of access for underrepresented, for students of color, first generation, low income. They've been doing the same thing as the community college. So we're aligning those efforts by giving those, our students, another option. Many students that graduated from high school might want to go to HBCU because we don't have one in state, but sometimes it's out of sight, out of mind, and not realistic. But we're providing a realistic opportunity for them to come here, so it's a recruitment tool to come here and then have that pathway of going to the HBCU. And this is actually a transfer strategy for us as well. K-12 and outreach and pipeline programming. So we just want to tie in closer with these school districts that I talked about earlier. One of the keys to retention that I know is building relationships, having that relationship. The relationship doesn't have to start once a student becomes a WCC student. We can start that at the eighth and ninth grade, which we do with some of our programs, but we want to do that a little bit more, starting earlier, building that relationship so they're a student before they become a student and enroll here. Increasing the exposure to CTE so students have that opportunity to utilize our programs and go off and create more, you know, get more jobs in this field and then have some summer program for them as well. And then lastly, I'll talk about building student leadership. This is also retention strategy. Peer mentors is a proven strategy that helps students, it helps the peer mentees, but it also helps that student that's the mentor build leadership for their next phase in life, whether it's transfer or a job, and then it builds a sense of belonging and community. So lastly, I'll say I'm just proud of the work that's been going on here at WCC. I'm happy to start my next journey of life here at WCC and then continue the good work that's been going on and then some of these strategies that we've had. Thank you for your time and I appreciate you. Have a good day.
Impressive report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustees, have any questions of Dean Reed?
I have a couple.
Trustee DeBarty.
On the retention strategies where we have the percentages where we were aiming at 20%, are those percentages of students that are purely degree-seeking or is that all students that enter at that fall? So we differentiate, and this is just like 27% of degree-seeking students. So somebody, just somebody that's coming for photography classes to augment their education later in life or somebody that's graduated with a degree and maybe taken one or two classes for their, to enter into a master's program, those wouldn't be considered in that cohort?
Correct, they're not in that cohort.
Okay. And then the other question is this Equity Ed Talks, which I've never seen and it sounds really interesting and I'd like to view them.
Okay.
How are they shared and are they archived and viewable through our website or could that happen if it's not happening?
So we have a system called CALPA, which is our professional development system that keeps all of our webinars. They aren't there for right now and we share them in our water cooler that comes out every Wednesday, the announcement when it comes out, but for right now, they're in the CALPA system.
But is there a way for me or people that I could promote this to, to enter into our system and say, view the Equity Ed Talks on why Black Lives Matter or view the Equity Ed Talks on disparities in maternity care? Is there a way for us to channel, make those available and for me to promote those to people who I know who would be interested in them?
Yep, I just remembered, they're on our WCC YouTube channel as well.
YouTube. So if I go and search, if I go to YouTube and say Washtenaw Community College, these things will come up as options for me?
There, yep. The WCC channel, there's a diversity and inclusion playlist under our channel which has the videos on there.
Okay, great. Thank you. I do want to recommend, these sound really interesting and it would be great if people could access them through our website generally. It just seems like it's something that would drive more traffic to our overall general website as well.
Okay.
Trustee McKnight, Morton?
Yes, thank you for being here. This is really, wow, we've been a long time waiting for something, this report. This is really astounding. Let me ask you this. In your recruiting, are you looking at just anyone besides African-Americans? I'm specifically thinking about the, you mentioned indigenous people. I'm thinking about Indians, Hispanics, you know, those type of groups of people. Because every time we see a report of other races, they're very miniscule. And I'd like to know if there anything, and maybe Dr. Hearns who could help with this, that could be increased. I don't know how many people are in this area, but something that could be, just put it out there and see if they're able to come to the school, you know, that you can contact them or someone. I can think of a couple of people myself, but, you know, I'm kind of hesitant because of how they feel. And these are young people, but how they feel about going to school. One is financial. Secondly, they don't feel that they can do it and complete it. And thirdly, maybe their family, I'm not sure, but maybe their family is not supportive either. So I'm just wondering, is there going to be a strategy for this type of outreach?
Yes, so with our outreach, one thing I learned about outreach, you do have to be intentional. Even when you look at recruitment for minorities, there's a lot of diversity within minorities. So you actually have to go to where the people are. So that is a strategy of mine to be more, you know, intentionally diverse within our recruiting for our office. Right now, we're looking at going to the high schools just to start and work with the students, not just African-American students, but students that want to come. But even if, you know, indigenous peoples are not, you know, at that high school as prevalent, then we'll have to look at strategies as well. Now, we'll say inclusion, that land acknowledgement, that's a first step to creating more inclusion for indigenous people. So we got to do more work and I'm committed to, you know, looking at other strategies that'll do that as well.
I'll just add this on. I received something in my email yesterday about the American Indians are going to be having, they're trying to get all the American Indians together for a conference. Now, it's not going to be in this area, but I found that very interesting to see this coming to my email. And I read it, you know, it's going to be in Colorado somewhere. But in any case, it shows me that they're reaching out to whoever and whomever that they can get to come to a conference regarding who they are and trying to inform them what's available for them. And every time I know that I've been at conferences, there are American Indian schools and universities. However, their enrollment is low because of the factors that presents them. So I'm just throwing this out too.
And those are key strategies, going to conferences like those. And I went to school at Central Michigan, we had a tribe there as well. So we do know that, you know, events and conferences do occur and everything. So you do have to, you know, be a little bit intentional and actually showing up to things like that.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you so much.
And there's a lot of tribal representation in northern Michigan.
Yes.
A number of tribes that are active and are visible.
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
I have questions about placement.
Okay.
And I don't know who wants to answer those questions, but my sense is that we keep, perhaps for time, questions. In other words, students who would spend two or three years here in developmental classes and not get very far, but we keep cutting the bottom off. In other words, students who aren't good readers and aren't good writers are getting cut out. And I'm wondering what placement changes and vehicles we're using for that and what happens to the students who don't make it?
So it's not been our desire to cut levels out. But one of the things I should have mentioned on the retention slide was, one of the things we had to do during COVID, we had started the community, was using a higher sample to replacement instead of that.
Dr. Hearns, could you come to a microphone? Thank you.
So one of the things I should have mentioned on that retention slide was, you know, one of the things that we were doing a little bit more before COVID happened was that we were using the writing assessment, which is a little bit more, it's a lot more authentic than the actual acuplacer test we had been using. Well, then when COVID happened, we had to use it a lot more. And it actually did show that it was a much more authentic assessment to place students in writing. So our goal has not been to cut anything out. We've not gotten rid of, not in the last three or four years, any levels of developmental ed. But what our desire has been is to make sure everybody was correctly placed in the right level that they need to. So we've been implementing more writing assessment and then in the fall, we're going to do some corequisite support. So both in math and in English, the faculty have developed core requisites, so support courses, so students can be placed in college-level English, college-level math, and then they'll have two credits of support to support them. So our goal is about making sure people are correctly placed. And if they need a little bit of help, we give them the help, but we not require that they take developmental ed and prolong, you know, their stay here at Washtenaw Community College or prolong them not being able to take college-level courses.
Well, I certainly support the right example and have for a long time as a more accurate placement. What if they need a lot of help?
So if they need a lot of help, we got two different places they could go. We have developmental ed courses still here at the college and we also have our adult transitions program, which again, either of those may be options for students and they both still fully exist for students to go there so they can make sure that they get the support that they need.
Okay. And my second question has to do with counseling and looking at the HR reports, we've lost two counselors recently, two certified counselors, and one of whom was an African-American man. I'm not sure you have another African-American man in counseling. So are we looking forward to having more counselors and to finding more minority counselors or what's the deal there?
Yes, yes, yes. So as everybody transitions over the next couple of months, you know, we're going to probably see some transition in people retiring and other things and we'll continue to recruit and replace people. I mean, diverse recruiting is part of what we do because it's the right thing to do for our students. So that will always be a thread in the work that we do there.
I'm always afraid that counselors become advisors, so we're looking at counseling.
Yes, but we're looking at what we need in each area, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd like a follow-up, something that trustee Hatcher mentioned. What about, how are we going, well, let me put it this way. When you're asking the students about if they can go in, you know, they need to, from the testing, they need to go into this program or that program to increase their skill level, does this go against their financial aid?
Yes, it does. So that's why it's important for us to minimize how many courses they need to get what they need. So like when I talk about support courses, those are a lot less credits than what they may have had to do before. So we do want to keep that into account because it does go against their financial aid.
Right, I just wanted to hear that again. I know we discussed it before. So do you counsel them on this? You know, like if you take, if you're really low in these skill levels, yes, you have financial aid, but it's going to go against that.
Correct. But again, we want, our goal is to help them get to where they need. So for example, in math, we have a program where the students can take a one-credit math course that'll allow them to continue to remediate until they get to the level that they need. So again, it is our goal for students to manage their financial aid adequately as well as make sure that they get the skills that they need to get in those college-level courses because both things are something that we should be concerned about.
Hypothetically, is this like a one semester, two semesters?
It depends on where they're at.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Trustee Hatcher?
I'll follow up on your follow-up.
Okay.
As we work with the high schools, are we at all promoting, encouraging students to come out of those high schools with the skills they need for going on?
Absolutely.
That's part of the problem. They have high school diplomas, but they aren't good readers and they aren't good writers and their math skills might not be good. I don't know. I mean, it used to be. So what are we doing about that?
So we actually do have some programs where the math faculty and the English faculty have been reaching out. This year, that slowed down, you know, a lot just because of COVID. But when Dean Reed actually mentioned helping the students get scholarships, one of the things that we did do was our writing center, some writing center staff, staff and Tom Zimmerman actually put together workshops for those students at the high school. And we need to do a lot more of that because if we can get them to the skill level that they need to be, then they can come here and be placed correctly. So that's something that we do need to do a lot more of.
Encouraging success in high schools.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Dr. Hearns. Thank you, Dean Reed. Appreciate your special report.
Thank you.
We'll move to monthly reports. And the first of them is Personnel Matters. There are a series of action items on our agenda tonight. Tab B, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the personnel recommendations as submitted, but I want to point out that they have been amended in one regard since this was printed for you. Full-time new hire Terry Barnes, Chief Financial Officer, is listed on this personnel recommendation. Do I hear a motion for approval?
I move we approve the personnel recommendations.
Seconded.
And we have support. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oh, excuse me. Diana?
I'd like to go just make a mention of the people who are retiring or ending employment with our beautiful institution here. Full-time ending employment, Kimberly Gross, 22 years of service, professional counselor, 22 years of service. And Athia Schroeder, technical writer, instructional designer, 18 years of service. I want to give some shout-outs to them both. I think this is wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yes, Ruth?
I remember Athia, never mind. In the water cooler, this recent water cooler, there was a list of, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, 10 people retiring, including Kim Gross, but two people from the childcare, Beau Bergen, Gross, Martin Thomas, Arnett Chisholm. And they've all been here a total of 278 years. So this is a, I think we had mentioned of the turnover and the changes. This is the beginning of people who've been here 25 or 30 years leaving. And I think it was Arnett who's been here 33 years is our black male counselor who's done a lot of work with a young man. done a lot of work with a young man and so forth. So we have a lot to replace here.
Yes.
But, I mean, I don't know, can we exist without Bo Bergen? Do the lights come on if he's ready? I don't know if that's true.
Bring a flashlight.
Okay. I just wanted to acknowledge those people that were in the water cooler and the number of years they had served.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you both for your acknowledgements. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Stands approved. Thank you. The next item for action this evening, appointment of the President and Chief Executive Officer. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees extend the appointment of Dr. Rose B. Belanca as President and Chief Executive Officer to June 30, 2024, and that she be granted two additional weeks of vacation in each year of her contract term, and that the Chair of the Board of Trustees be authorized to sign a contract with Dr. Belanca on behalf of the Board of Trustees. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support.
And we have a motion and support. Is there any discussion? If not, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer D'Varity?
D'Varity, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
Motion is approved. Thank you. Congratulations, Dr. Belanca.
Thank you. Or should I wait?
Come right on the heels of it. Step up.
Okay, I will. I'd like to thank the Board for your support and your confidence. And I assure you that I have the same desire as I had the first day I walked into my classroom as a teacher. So thank you for the honor and privilege of being here. Thank you.
Thank you. We're proud to have you, and we look forward to some good years ahead of us. Thank you. Tab C, excuse me, Tab D, Independent Staff Salary Range Table, another action item. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the 2021, 2022 Independent Staff Salary Range Table as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And we have support. Is there any discussion? Trustee Hatcher.
I'd just like to say on these various tabs of salaries that we're going to vote on, I'm glad to see that no one, none of, the lowest is above $15 an hour. And I think that's, that's, that's good news.
Good step in the right direction. Any other comments? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer D'Varity?
D'Varity, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
The motion stands approved. Thank you. Tab D in our packet, Independent Staff Salary Adjustments, another action item. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve a 1.5% adjustment to the independent staff salary and wage rates for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion?
D'Varity, second.
And support? Is there any discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer D'Varity?
D'Varity, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion stands approved. Tab E in our packet, Part-Time Staff and Coaches Wages, Wage Rates Action Item. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the 2021, 2022 Part-Time Support Staff and Club Sports Coaches Salary as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And support? Is there any discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer D'Varity?
D'Varity, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
And that motion is approved. Thank you.
There is actually, one, one comment I wanted to make. I want to thank the staff for putting this forward. And here again, as trustee Hatcher mentioned previously, all our wages were over $15. The initial hourly wage rate on all of these support staff has been raised across the board to $15 as a minimum moving forward. And I think that, that puts us in a good position as a leader, leader in the community for paying living wages.
Thank you. Next matter is the 2021 Part-Time Faculty Wage Rates. And Tab G, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the attached 2021, 2022 Part-Time Faculty Wage Rates as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion and support. Is there any discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer D'Varity?
D'Varity, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
And that motion is approved. Thank you. Department Chair Appointments. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the attached 2021, 2022 Faculty Department Chair Appointments. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion and support. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer D'Varity?
D'Varity, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
And the motion is approved. Thank you. That concludes those series of personnel actions. Next, we have our financial reports. EVP Johnson, before we vote on these reports, is there anything that you'd like to highlight for us?
Thank you, Chair Milliken. Yes, if I could go to page three, I don't know if we're going to bring those up or not. But if you go to page three in your package, I just want to point out for the Board that our, our trends are running consistent with prior months. You'll note that our revenue is down about $3 million from budget with the lion's share of that to, to be in the tuition area. A point of positive trend, the, the spring/summer tuition is actually trending above budget. Our credit hours for spring are up about 11%. And that really relates to, in large part, to the, the strength of the future for frontliners and the reconnect programs, which have really, really helped the, the college this spring/summer. And now, fully offsetting and even a bit more is the reduction in costs. So as you'll note, the total expenditures before transfers, about $7.6 million below budget, and that is consistent with our trends from prior month. And those cost reductions reflect the ongoing remote operations largely of our campus, both for part-time staff and for non-personnel costs. I really just think, think of it as the variable cost of supporting on-campus operations that the college has been able to mitigate during, during this time period. And I would fully expect that that trend will continue again through June. So that in, that in total, that the college has a year-to-date surplus of about $3.6 million, and that's after the offset of the Fitness Center not being able to produce a gross margin for this year for the obvious reasons of its closure. So that, that concludes the summary.
Ruth, did you have any questions on transfers within this report?
Yeah, I do. I don't understand. Help me, help!
Glad to. Thank you.
Okay. I asked before about operating transfers. So I'm looking on page three. And the list there, those, was money transferred from that list of, of areas to the general fund?
These, these transfers are all monies except for the Health and Fitness Center. We'll kind of put that aside for the moment, right? Each of those funds, repair, maintenance, technology, infrastructure, debt, retirement, deferred maintenance, furniture, each of those transfers were monies taken out of the general fund as part of our annual budget as approved by the Board.
Out of the general?
Out of the, and into the plant fund, into the plant fund, which is, which is part of the financial report that we present to the Board for year-end results. So the September report, we would report to you the results of the plant fund. So these monies are moved into the plant fund. However, there are separate sub-funds, like for, for deferred maintenance, for instance, which we have report in, in this report each month to the Board around the deferred maintenance fund. And also, I would note, capital fund, which is below the transfers at the, at the very bottom, you'll see transfer to, to the plant fund, cap, cap, capital fund. So there are various sub-funds within the plant fund to support capital and maintenance activities of the college. Now, the Health and Fitness Center is actually a transfer into the general.
I understand, I understand. But I don't see, now, for the, so that that money in the budget was sent to deferred maintenance, 1.5 million. Do I see that on page five or not?
On page five, if you want to turn, turn to page five. For instance, at the very top, you'll see the very first line, general fund transfer. So this is the cumulative amount since the establishment of the deferred maintenance fund many years ago.
Okay.
Now, the 1.5 would be part of that 21.3 million.
I'm beginning to understand. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Are there any other questions of EVP Johnson? Seeing none? Thank you.
I think we have to accept this. I move that we receive the financial reports for May of 2021.
Any further discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Actually, can you just be all in favor?
All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
And are there any in opposition? Hearing none? It passes with flying colors. Thank you. Facilities Development, EVP Johnson, welcome back.
Very much. Just a couple of projects to point out for the Board. Really, our, our two large projects, the Morris Lawrence renovation and the SC renovation. The Morris Lawrence, we are working very hard to vet all the, the various elements of that, very complex project. We meet weekly with all the key players. The Board had approved the contract with Stenco, and we meet with Stenco, we meet with Hobbs &amp; Black, we meet with our, our internal team. We have developed a detailed project plan for that, and we're vetting all the elements of it. So that, that project is moving along. We, we will hit some key order dates for that project in early July that relate to the HVAC system. There's long lead items, about 14 weeks on some, some of our HVAC items. And so we are on schedule to have those orders placed in early July for assets to be on-site here in the month of December to start work on, on that project. On the Student Center project, the Board had approved a contract with Fishbeck. We have been going through detailed meetings. We've finalized the design of the HVAC system itself. We're solving some little less-than-nuisance issues as relates to how to get the HVAC equipment into the building. We have to open holes in the roof in order to get it in, and we're working through those as, as we speak. The next big element of that project will be to finalize the phasing for the completion of that. There are HVAC zones in the SC building. You group them into two, into groups of two. There is about a two-month window for each of those groups of two. And during that time, we have to displace folks out of the building for their sections, find a new home for them, temporary space, and then bring, bring them back. So we are going through that final phasing plan on the SC project. Both are, are moving along well. I would say that the HVAC project in SC also is on time, and the, the, the budget indications are well within budget. So that's positive news. Lastly, just wanted to point out for the Board on the bottom of the second page, we always report to the Board contracts which we enter into for constructions that are below $100,000 but above $20,000. And the second to last one there, the Quorum Group, Take, Take, Takeform, this has been a project that's been on the college's agenda, got interrupted by COVID, and we're back at it. And that is to, we've hired Takeform to develop a new renumbering system and scheme for the LA building, which has been fraught with interesting quirks over the years. So we've got a good group of stakeholders that are going to provide feedback to Takeform around their thoughts around the re, the renumbering scheme. And we're also going to use the LA building and working with Lori Muton and her, her team to develop a brand standard for signage within a building, so that we, that we can start to, to envision identity within a building and identity of the college throughout the building, and then hopefully be able to carry that to other places on campus as well. And we're going to use this project as the starter for, for that broader one. So just wanted to know the Board about that. We actually will have the numbering scheme developed by late August. But the actual transition of the old numbering to the new numbering will actually be installed over the holiday break between the end of the fall semester and the beginning of the winter semester. And we're integrating that all with our course schedules and all those other good things. So just wanted to point out.
Will you be handing out maps with that new numbering system?
We hope, we hope to have an app, an app that will say that you are here.
It's just a circle. I mean, nevermind.
That's right. Nothing to it, right?
Trustee D'Varity?
Just Vice President Johnson, one question. I know I've asked this at other, at past meetings, but as we report on the Morris Lawrence renovation, I want to keep on the table or on our radar screen, investing in the most up-to-date information and communication technology we can as we're doing this $10 million renovation, so we can look forward to the future for the use of this building using whatever, whatever the top, you know, state-of-the-art is as we're doing the construction. I understand that we may have to look at a little bit additional funding down the road if we're going to fully implement that.
Yes, absolutely. We, thank you very much, trustee D'Varity. We are, we have a separate but very much related project on technology upgrades for the ML building, which is actually being run right, right now with the help of Alucion to help us in our thought process through, through, through that. We fully anticipate that that project, which needs to be integrated into the broader ML project, will require additional funding. And our hope is to come back to the Board in September, not only for that technology project, but also to finalize our thinking around the dollars required for the SC project as well, and bring both of those projects to the Board in early fall. And then, when and if the Board approves the technology upgrade project, we will then reintegrate that back into the ML renovation project.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Do any members of the Board of Trustees have comments they wish to share this evening? Trustee D'Varity?
I want to thank the administration for, in this package of, for the most part, modest increases for salary increases for long-time salaried employees, but most importantly, putting in front of us new wage floors of $15 an hour, which I think is really important. It's the lowest paid in our economy, need at least that much to survive and to thrive. And I really want to thank the administration for bringing this package to us with that in mind. And I understand in the coming fiscal year... And I understand in the coming fiscal year, we can look forward to every month when we look at our personnel recommendations, that we'll be hiring people in at no less than $15 an hour this coming year. And I really want to thank the administration for making that commitment. And I think it's, puts us, as I said previously, as a leader in the community, to making sure that our staff and at all levels are paid a livable wage. Thank you. Thank you to all the administration on that.
Are there any other trustee comments? Trustee Hatcher?
I'm not sure what effect this would have, but I continue to be distressed over the loss of the childcare center. And I continue to see in news reports the, the fact, the loss of childcare centers all over the place. University of Michigan, the public schools aren't doing pre and post-childcare. And I just wonder how we could possibly know what effect that has on people registering at the college. I'm not sure that the scholarship for childcare is going to supplant the need for on-campus childcare. And I hope we can still be open to the possibility of having some sort of campus childcare to enable our, especially our women students, but families to be able to go to school. And I think we need to keep that in our thoughts as we face the new normal of somehow helping people with childcare. No one, childcare centers are closing all over the place, and we need to think forward and provide that service. And I continue to be distressed by the fact that we have lost ours. Thank you.
Well, it's an important area, Ruth, but at the same time, we have the governor talking about bringing forward considerable funding for childcare in the state, and that's going to be something for us to watch in Lansing to see how we might be the beneficiary of that.
That would, that would be good, but we need to keep it in focus. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, I, last week, or the week before, I had signed up for the ACCT seminar for Robert's Rules of Order. It was, it's been many, many years, over 10 years since I've had that training. And there was quite a few people online, and it was really interesting, just refreshing. They have a new book out now. And I think it would behoove, you know, the administration if, if we could get a copy of that new Robert's Rules book. But it was good to just hear what, what we do is not necessarily in a lot of things what was discussed. But, you know, every, every board has their way of doing things, but there's certain things that we should not, we don't even have to do. But in any case, I just wanted to say it was really good. Now, I have requested from our esteemed Executive Secretary yesterday, or today, I don't remember, if, if, if I could attend the diversity, there's going to be a seminar again through ACCT next week, June 22nd, I believe is the date, on diversity, inclusion, equity and inclusion. And they have a nice panel. These are all presidents generally, and there's some that are not presidents of different, various institutions that are going to be putting this on. So I would like to do that, too.
Diana, is it your view that the chair has generally been in compliance with Robert's Rules of Order this evening?
Yes, you have.
Thank you.
Been doing it very well, Mr. Chair.
President Belacca, do you have remarks for us this evening?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Can I add to, I think if we get a copy of the new Robert's Rules, there ought to be a quiz.
Well, I'll get you all a book.
Well, I'm encouraged at that. Thank you. We'll move to old business, the Crane Liberal Arts Building Roof Restoration. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve this repair contract with Duke Roofing in the amount not to exceed $349,500. Do I hear a motion?
D'Varity moves that we accept this recommendation.
Support.
And support?
Oh, support. I thought.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer D'Varity?
D'Varity, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries. We have another action item following, Business Educational Building Entryway Door Replacements. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve this replacement contract with Calvin Glass in the amount not to exceed $162,200. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support.
And support. Thank you. Is there any discussion?
A question. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I'd like to know, is Kelvin Glass, is Kelvin Glass a local? I've never heard of that.
They are, they are local. They're not local in Washtenaw County, but they're local in southeast Michigan.
So they, you couldn't find anyone in, in the county?
We, we had three, three bidders on it. And Calvin was the lowest responsive bidder. Unfortunately, one, one of the bidders, Cristo Glass, which I don't know if they're local or not, they, they did not attend the mandatory site visit, so they are not eligible.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one quick question.
I think, Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher.
I have a quick, I have a quick question about the building. Is the mural still in the hallway of the BE building?
It is. Yes.
Thank you.
Trustee D'Varity?
So we approved the, or we're voting on this.
We're discussing.
Discussing the 162,000 for the recommendation. But the bid from Calvin Glass, the total bid was 126,400. Why is there that extra cushion there? Is that for contingencies?
It is, yes.
So we're hoping that we're only paying 126,000?
That is correct. Thank you.
And the motion is for an amount not to exceed.
Can I have a question?
The language.
I've got that.
President Belacca?
I just want to make sure. So the 40 is not, the contractual amount's 120?
The, 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 the contract that we'll issue be for the 126,000, and the 40 is for the contingency.
But it's not going to be given to the vent?
Correct.
Unless absolutely needed. Thank you. Thanks.
All right. I think we've all addressed that. Vanessa?
I just needed your opinion. Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer D'Varity?
D'Varity, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
And that motion stands approved. Thank you. Next, Parking Lots Four and Six Resurfacing. An action item, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve a repair contract with Nagel in the amount not to exceed $298,640. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Trustee Hatcher?
I love resurfacing parking lots. Just thought I'd say.
Would you like to be here?
I often drive by and watch. I live around the corner.
We'll provide notice if that's of interest. Thank you. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer D'Varity?
D'Varity, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
And that motion is approved. Thank you. New business. For discussion, Approval of 2021-2022 Faculty Sabbaticals. EVP Hearn's. Walk us through this, please.
So there normally are a few more, but with COVID, that's been kind of funky. So we actually do have two sabbatical requests, one from William Teague and one from Marvin Blute, and they're both for the winter 2022 semester, so they're not for fall. So we may be coming back to the board with some additional ones as we go back out.
There are a total of six?
There usually is, there's a total of six that can be allocated.
So four, you could open it up for four more?
And we do.
Okay. Thank you.
If you remember, last year, we actually came back twice with sabbaticals.
Right.
Trustee McKnight-Morton, please.
I would just like to say, I think both of these are very interesting and is going to be, but I'm really, I'm really into what Marvin brought.
Blute.
Blute. I like how he's thinking in the future and how he wants to incorporate the curriculum, really change it a little bit, not a lot, but enough to, so it can be used for a long time. And, and I like that.
He actually has been a leader in our Exercises Medicine program and us being an award winner in that area, so he has a lot of very innovative ideas.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Any further thoughts, anybody? Thank you, Dr. Hearn's. And I would now entertain a motion to adjourn the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. Lot of interest there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for attending.
Good meeting.